Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Macomb Township Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Here.
Mr. Marley?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Spatafora?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Bentley?
I'm here.
Okay. We have everyone here tonight. That's awesome. Next, the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion?
I had comments, and they've been picked up
Okay.
in the last review. If there are no other items, I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bentley?
Sec.
Supported by Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, sorry, just one point of discussion. This might be through you to our legal counsel this evening. I think we forgot to exclude Ms. Smith from the roll call votes. I just want to make sure, right now, we're noting on all of our votes 600. I assume that's correct, because she did not vote. She didn't abstain. She didn't vote no. I just want to make sure we were recording those correctly.
Yeah, as long as it's reflected in the members present, then that'll be acceptable.
Yeah, it shows her as absent under the roll call. So, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Shame on me. I didn't do my job. My first meeting, sitting over here, dead motion.
None of us did, so.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
And I was with you in spirit, guys.
Motion by Mr. Bentley, seconded by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item, approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? If none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield?
Yeah, support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. New business, rezoning request, residential one family R1 and local commercial C1 to residential family, residential multifamily, high-density R2H. Permanent parcel 0833-376-008, 0833-376-010, and 0833-400-043. Located on the north side of Hall Road, east of Romeo Plank, Section 33, Salmar, Macomb Corporate Center LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Let me go through a few slides here with you. So, this first item, as you mentioned, is a rezoning request. The property is located on Hall Road. It would be to the east of Romeo Plank Road in Section 33 of the township. Current zoning, two of the parcels are zoned R1, which is single-family, three units per acre zoning. The other one is zoned C2 or commercial currently. They are requesting for this to be rezoned to R2H at this time. Looking at the current master plan, the 2008 master plan, that area, which is shown, highlighted in green there, or I should say, circled in green, is master planned currently for commercial property. And the Cultivate Macomb Master Plan, which is on our agenda tonight to discuss, also has that master planned as commercial property. Having heavier density, higher-density residential, would it make sense on Hall? Sure. You know, it's not the worst place in the world to put it if you're gonna have higher-density residential developments, which they are seeking. But it is not master planned for those items at this time. So, that being said, the fact that it doesn't match the master plan, we could not support this recommendation at this time.
Okay. Petitioner, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Tom Kalas. That's K-A-L-A-S. My address is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, and that's Bingham Farms, Michigan. I'm here this evening representing the applicant and petitioner, Salmar Corporate Center LLC, and the Harvey and Nancy Cant Living Trust. We are seeking rezoning of the property, as Mr. Box indicated, from the current C2 for parcel 043, and the current R1, single-family residential, for parcels 080 and 010, to a R2H residential multifamily, high-density, as indicated in our petition. On our supplement to the petition, my client has agreed to limit the story, or the height of the buildings, to four stories. As you are aware, your R2H allows from anywhere from four to 10-story height for the buildings. The township does not actually have a zoning ordinance that allows for three-story buildings. R2H is what makes sense for this area. It's a use that's in demand. Commercial, retail, as we all know, bricks and mortar specifically, is not in demand. There's plenty of commercial on Hall Road to accommodate any current and future demand for that. But quite frankly, with the onset of COVID, and actually even prior to that, Amazon, it has totally changed the way that people shop today. There's, the trend is obviously going towards online shopping. The bricks and mortar-type physical-location stores are not necessary anymore, or at least not in the amount that was required before to satisfy the consumer needs. This is an ideal location for a residential multifamily development, which, as we all know, is in demand today. People just can't afford houses. You know, you've got two parcels that are zoned R1. Those are 70-foot lots. In today's market, with the cost of materials, the supply chain nightmares, the cost of land, the cost of labor, you cannot build a house in Macomb Township on a 70-foot lot that is going to be under $300,000, under $400,000. We're pricing everyone out of the market. And quite frankly, today's buyers, the millennials, the younger generation, they don't want to own houses. They want to rent. They want to be mobile. They want to move from job to job, location to location. So, being that these properties are on Hall Road, it makes absolutely sense to rezone them for a multifamily residential use. It would be a nice transition from a planning standpoint, from the single-family to the north. As you can see, both to the east and west, you have zone commercial and master-plan commercial property. Quite frankly, R1 abutting Hall Road makes no sense at all from a planning perspective. And C2, there's an overabundance of C2 on Hall Road that, quite frankly, is sitting vacant, where we have vacancies. So, the requested rezoning, we feel is a use that is compatible for the area. It's in demand. It's marketable. It's economically feasible, and it makes total sense to allow for that type of use on these parcels at this time. So, we would respectfully request that the Planning Commission give us a recommendation for approval, so that we can proceed to the Township Board for a final decision. Thank you. And I am available. The petitioner is also here, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Anyone?
My comment, it seems, from some of the information that was submitted, the supplement to rezoning application. Mr. Box, would this be considered a conditional rezoning?
What they have applied for is a straight rezoning to R2H. So, as Mr. Kalas mentioned, R2H does allow 10-story, up to 10-story buildings. And though he says, you know, they're looking at four-story, this is not a conditional rezoning tonight, so that we would not have any ability to hold them to that straight rezoning like this.
Correct.
If I may interject, this is a straight rezoning, as Mr. Box indicated. We have the ability, under the law, under the conditional rezoning law, to offer conditions at the time, prior to or at the time of the hearing. We are offering that condition. It's binding. It's, we're obligated to it. We've agreed to limit the height of the buildings under R2H to four stories. So, that is binding. It's on the record, under the statute, and you have the comfort level, if you do vote for a recommendation, that is valid, and we have to stick to it. So, to the extent that eases your uneasiness about this.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, this to follow up, and so we've had no discussion on conditional rezoning at our office?
This is not a conditional rezoning.
You've had no discussion with our planners?
No.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question to legal counsel through you. So, it's not a conditional rezoning, but if we were to vote to recommend or deny this, would we be voting to recommend or deny conditional rezoning based upon the petitioner's offer tonight? How would that, how would the nuts and bolts of that work?
Typically, it would have to be something that was put out to the public, so that they knew what the conditions were going to be for the rezoning.
It is in the sup, it's attached to, it's in the supplement to the application.
I apologize. I didn't receive the supplement.
Yeah, no, just so the record's clear.
Okay, so if that were provided, or part of the record, and it was a supplement, then the conditional rezoning could be voted on tonight, and the petitioner would be bound by it if he approved that.
So, if I can just follow up to that. I believe there is a supplement, and I believe that I'm reading it here. It just says, "Supplement to the rezoning application." And in here, one of the sentences, "The applicants and owners have agreed that if their rezoning requests are granted, the building height will not exceed four stories." I believe typically, our process is, we have a conditional rezoning process. I could be mistaken here.
Yes.
Does adding that as a sentence on a text addendum, do you think that qualifies them as applying for that?
I would feel more comfortable having it go through the actual conditional rezoning process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, then at this time, I need a motion to open it to the public. Whoa, wait a minute. Yes, sir. And you are?
My name is Norb Franz. I'm a resident of the Westchester Farms.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. You are who?
My name is Norb Franz. I'm a resident of the Westchester Farms.
Okay, all right. We're gonna open it to the public. I thought you were one of the petitioners.
No, sir.
Okay. Have a seat for just a minute. Okay. I'm sorry. I really, I really did. I thought you were one of the petitioners. All right. As we open the public portion for this item, any person wishing to speak or be recognized will be asked to give their name and address before speaking. We ask that all speakers limit their comments to four minutes. Once the public portion is closed, we will not recognize any further discussion or comments from the community.
We have to vote on it.
And now, I'd like to do a motion for, well, just a minute. Hold on. A motion to open the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, seconded by Mr. Tuckfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now, you can come up.
I'm in no hurry. Once again, my name is Norb Franz. I'm a resident of the Westchester Farms subdivision. Just have a few questions. I realize this is just a rezoning, but I do have a couple of questions that may pertain more to site plan. I realize we're not at that stage yet, but the questions I have are, how many buildings are proposed? Where the location of the building or buildings may go? And how many units the petitioner is seeking? And also whether the petitioner is planning to seek any variances. That's it. I'm not voicing any-
What was the last one?
Whether the petitioner plans to seek any variances, setbacks, things of that nature.
Gotcha.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Not expressing any support or opposition, just some questions at this point.
Sure.
Thank you.
And we take all those questions, just so the audience knows, and we give them to the planner at the end, after we've closed the public here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. All right. Anyone else? Come on up. And again, name and address, please.
Stephen Paul. My address is 45165 Thorntree Lane. All set?
Yep. Go ahead, sir.
My property directly abuts to this, this area that they're looking to rezone. When we purchased the home seven years ago, we had eyes wide open that this was zoned commercial and residential. I believe that if we end up with a four-story structure, basically a four-story or higher apartment building in my backyard, in all of my neighbors' backyard, it not only affects the property value of our homes, but when a realtor would come to get comparables, it's gonna affect the value of all of your homes and anybody else in our subdivision. Like I said, I have no objection to this property being developed. The reason that the petitioner's here today is they're asking for a rezoning, and it disagrees with the master plan that the township has already established. Some of the points that it does disagree with, the master plan on page 62, it says, "Land use plan element, which describes in text and graphic form the proposed spatial distribution and intensity of residential, commercial, and industrial land uses." A four-story apartment building, however many units they're proposing, that's gonna be an intense residential area. It doesn't agree with the subdivision that's there. Just to the west of the R1 zone, those are all vacant building lots for residential. There's already utilities run to those lots. They're, they intend to put homes there. So, there'll be homes, we're not talking, you know, little shoebox homes. These are considerable homes. Very proud of our subdivision. Again, on page 62, "Purpose of the master plan: To plan for the development of the vacant areas of the township, and to provide for physical environment of the township. The plan works in conjunction with the zoning ordinance, to promote the general health, safety, and welfare by making the township more functional, beautiful, healthful, and efficient. Also, to promote the public interest of the township residents." Going on, "The need for policies," page 67 from the master plan. "The plan addresses such traditional problems as strip development, spot zoning." I would consider this to be spot zoning. You have residential all around. Now, you're trying to put a high-density residential unit in the middle of it. Again, this four-story structure. Driving up and down Hall Road today, the only four-story structure I think I saw was on the south side in Clinton Township, the Plant and Rand Building, or you could look at the Harbors. They may be three or four stories. I'm not sure. Or further down Hall Road, all the way down to Utica, there's four-story residential structures there, and they're next to Sam's Club. They're in a completely commercial area, where it's not an issue for the adjoining Again, page 72 from the master plan, residential land use. "It protects residential areas from incompatible land uses." This is from the township master plan.
I don't mean to interrupt, but you have one minute.
What? I'm almost done, sir.
All right. That's okay.
Okay. Again, it addresses specifically in the master plan, Hall Road. "Although commercial along Hall Road is planned as intensive, future development must be tempered with a proper buffer between the more intensive uses and those residential uses existing and proposed north of Hall Road." This is from the old master plan. And I appreciate the petitioner being here, and I, as I said, bought this property, eyes wide open. I'm here to protect our interests. I hope that you all take this into consideration when making your decisions on this request for rezoning. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Maruri. That's M-A-R-U-R-I. I live at 19388 Hudson River Drive in Macomb. Okay. I'm not as prepared as the gentleman before me, but I have to ditto pretty much everything he said. I do live right behind the mud puddle on that map. It didn't used to be there. It used to just be trees and land. So, when they went in and took down all the trees, we were pretty upset. They left like one little row of trees. I know the trees that are behind the R1 lots as well. They're big, beautiful trees, even bigger than the ones they took down behind my house. I would be afraid that those trees would go if they do all this big construction. It really adds a lot to our community. We don't have a lot of trees there, because it's a newer community, and so these older-growth trees are very nice to have in our neighborhood. My other concern is this high-density right behind, basically right behind my house. You know, we have a very quiet neighborhood, walkable neighborhood, and I just can't imagine like a four-story, really dense, populated just right behind us. My other concern is actually traffic. It's already hard enough to do the roundabout and cross Hall Road to get to the Twin River Drive, and now we're gonna be competing with like all these other people trying to get to these apartments. I don't know if you'd have to add another light there or something, but it will be very difficult traffic-wise if you add a lot more apartments there. So, anyways, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? All right, then at 6:51, I'd like to go ahead and close the public portion with a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora?
Yeah, support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I guess a lot of those were comments, but a few questions. The one gentleman did ask about the number of buildings. They're, they're not at that point yet, so we don't know how many buildings they're gonna be proposing. They have not submitted any formal plans to us. I don't know if the petitioner can answer that or not. And the same thing goes with variances. They have not applied for any variances to this point. That does not mean that they won't. I guess I would defer to the petitioner on that as well. And then lastly, the lady's comment, really, about the light. Were this to be developed as, you know, four-story apartment buildings, the road department, in conjunction with MDOT, this is an MDOT roadway, would determine whether that warrants a light or not, not the township.
All right. Petitioner, did you have anything that you wanted to share?
Yeah, so as far as the buildings and units, that, of course, is going to depend on the R2H zoning and what's permitted under the district. Part of the reason why we didn't come in with a conditional rezoning is because we want to rezone it to R2H and then give our architects and engineers the flexibility and creativity to design buildings and place them on those properties in a manner that will be not only marketable and aesthetically pleasing, but will also adhere to the ordinance, you know, such as requiring buffering. They'll be buffering, you know, on the north side of the development against a single-family residential to the north, you know. And it will be, as far as variances, we obviously don't know until we actually prepare plans, should the recommendation in rezoning be granted, you know, to develop the site in the manner under R2H with a product that is, you know, marketable, in demand, and obviously aesthetically pleasing in the township. So, you know, so we didn't submit for conditional rezoning in large part, because those are things we want to deal with once we get the zoning, and we don't have those yet, and to submit those at this time would be premature. That's why we came in under the, under the regular rezoning process for R2H. And again, offering the condition of limiting it to four stories, which we have the right to do under the statute, and which is binding. So, you know, anything that's done on that site, the residents to the north should know that you will be provided with protections under the district, under the R2H zoning district. As far as traffic lights into the site, you know, that's a, as Mr. Box indicated, a decision by an agency, you know, and they're gonna review the plans. The plans will also be reviewed by various governmental agencies having jurisdiction, as well as the township and the township departments. All criteria has to be met, and it'll be a development that obviously will be safe, you know, for the residents. And you talk about a four-story building being intense, you know, commercial, obviously, by its own nature, is more of an intense use than a residential multifamily use. And, you know, with residential multifamily versus commercial, commercial, you've got traffic going in and out at all times of the day. With peak hours, obviously, multifamily residential, you may have people leaving in the morning at a certain time, coming back in the evening at a certain time, but in-between and after-hours, it's pretty much, you know, less traffic than you would see with a commercial use. So, we feel this is a use that is compatible for that area, and it's a transition from the single-family to the north, more so than a commercial use would be. And I do realize the master plan calls for commercial, but again, you know, we feel that there's an overabundance of commercial-zoned and master-plan property along Hall Road. And what's in demand right now is, quite frankly, our multifamily residential units. People just can't afford to build houses, you know, with the way the materials and the pricing and everything has gone through the roof. And hopefully, in the future, that comes down, but, you know, they, it just keeps going higher and higher. Inflation, gas, everything. So, you know, people need a place to live. As I indicated before, a lot of the younger generation, they don't even want to own a home. They want to have the flexibility and mobility to move around. So, not to belabor the point, but, you know, we feel it's a good use, and we would request a recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any follow-up discussion or questions? Once again, Mr. Box, this is not part of our master plan, correct?
Correct. Master plan has this area zoned as C2 commercial, well, commercial, not, it's not C2. It just says commercial.
It's what we have up here, correct?
It's master plan for commercial. The R1 is, is what it currently is zoned for, and someone could develop it as R1. If someone wanted to rezone it and follow the master plan, it would be commercial, not R2H, which is being sought tonight.
Okay. Mr. Spatafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Josh, and also to you, Dave Skirdo, can you explain maybe a little bit more the thought process that went in during the master planning, particularly for this area that designated certain parts for residential, high-density versus commercial? You've got maybe a stereotypical opinion that a lot of areas that abut a major, in this case, a state highway, M59 Hall Road, as commercial, and yet somehow you had single-family residential, three units or three, yeah, three units per an acre in the R1 zoning classification right next to it. I know you put a lot of time and planning into the master plan, and this master plan update, perhaps might go into it, but I'm just curious.
I'll let Dave largely answer this, but I will say the R1 that's there likely existed long before Hall Road became what it is now, a divided highway.
Then in the review process, reexamining all that-
In the review process right now, this case is falling underneath the 2008 master plan. Neither one of us were around in 2008 to understand who, what the thought process was back then. I suspect back then, commercial, Mr. Kalas pointed out, but the commercials, shopping patterns, things like that, where people were building shopping centers along there. Hall Road probably wasn't quite as busy. So, as I said, a lot of our master plan review we're doing right now is based off that 2008 master plan, because that's what legally is enacted by the township, or adopted by the township.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps you, but it's like it goes back a long time. Well, I think the thought process was different, because you're going back 14 years.
And one of the things I'll point out, too, and maybe this can answer your question a little bit better, as far as the thought process. So, there are certain things required by different zoning categories. You know, he talked about C, or R2H having four stories up to 10 stories, and R1 allows only up to two stories, and C2, any commercial district only allows up to two stories. But there are- But there are other items at play as well. For example, this being master planned for commercial, and the gentleman indicating that, you know, he went in eyes wide open and did his homework, which is something that's been stressed by this planning commission and the zoning board and the Board of Trustees even. You know, people really need to do their homework when they're buying property. If this were to be commercial, a masonry wall would be required to separate the development from the residences. When you start changing categories, you're now changing some of the requirements. A masonry wall on R2H, I don't believe is required. I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but I don't think so would be required. So rezoning can have other impacts as well, and that goes a long ways into what we thought was best suited here for the master plan to protect the neighborhood that was already built. What was planned for previously was commercial. It is a very highly trafficked corridor, which lends itself to commercial properties as well.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question for the petitioner. Mr. Cal, so you indicated during your comments that you had refrained from the conditional rezoning request to give your architects, I believe you said, a wider hand or a freer hand. Can you explain that a little further? It perhaps conflicts with the concept of the conditional option that you're offering.
Sure, sure. My understanding is your conditional rezoning process requires an actual site plan to be submitted. We are not ready to submit a site plan until we know the zoning is granted, and then we work within that zoning to create something. Obviously, we're not in the business to create a project that no one's going to want to live in, so, you know, that's why we proceeded the way we did.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That helps me to understand. Yeah, I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duckfield. Anyone else? If there is no other discussion, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I would make a motion on the request to rezone from R1 and C1 to R2H to recommend denial to the Board of Trustees. This will be based upon consistency with the master plan and consistency with the recommendations from our planning department.
I'll second that. Okay. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Duckfield?
Yes.
For denial, correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to deny rezoning passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our list is a conditional rezoning request. Residential multifamily, low-density, R2L to general commercial, C2. Permanent parcel 0817-426-003, 0817-402-005, located on the east side of Romeo Plank, quarter-mile north of 23 Mile Road, Section 17, Chester Bozinski petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. At this time, we are actually recommending that this be tabled or postponed. I guess I can defer to legal for the appropriate term we want to use until the next planning commission meeting. They did get us a conditional rezoning agreement, but very late last week. We didn't have time to fully review it, and as was actually just mentioned with the previous item, conditional rezonings, they don't require a site plan, but they do require a concept plan, and they did not have a concept plan with their conditional rezoning agreement. We had advertised this well in advance. You know, this, as you're aware, I'm sure this is the old Wade Nursery property. They were looking to get this conditionally rezoned. They have a due diligence period, and this was the targeted planning commission meeting. They're just not quite there yet, so at this time, we're asking this to be tabled or postponed to the next meeting.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to postpone the conditional rezoning request for residential multifamily, low-density, R2L to general commercial, C2. Permanent parcel 0817-426-003, 0817-0402-005.
Due to lack of information?
Due to the petitioner not being...
Ready to proceed.
Not being ready. I mean, nothing good or bad, just isn't ready. Okay, so there's my motion.
I'll support that.
Motion by Mike Hardy, supported by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
I will. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Oh, Mr. Bentley, I'm sorry.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, on to C, the 2022 master public, master plan, public hearing and review. Mr. Box?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Dave, do you want to talk a little bit, I guess at the start here? So this, I'll open this with saying, you know, this is the very, very final draft version of the master plan. This is something that is required to be updated every five years for the township. Hasn't been done in this township since 2008. I don't know why that is, but it hasn't been. We've been working on this for about a year and a half. Typically, I would say a full update like this is closer to a year process. It's taken a little longer due to COVID and a few other hurdles we had to get through, but we're very comfortable and confident with what we have in front of you tonight. You got about an 80% version of this this past summer to review. In the fall, we had it in open house at the rec center. We got lots of comments from the public. We did two different surveys throughout this process, so we're comfortable with understanding what the public feels, as well as the product that our staff and Carla Wortman has put together, and I'm going to turn it over to Dave here to talk a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hardy. We are going to tag team. I'm going to take the first couple of slides, and Josh is going to finish up. I just want to point out a master plan. The reason why communities' master plan are, one, it aids boards, commissioners, staff with the daily decisions. I think we make a lot of decisions and affects ordinances and aids in that. It also provides a statutory basis for a zoning ordinance. By state law, Public Act 33, 2008, and 110 of 2006, a zoning ordinance must be based on a land use vision or a master plan. The third one is, a master plan also acts in coordination with a capital improvements plan as you go through and figure out where roads go, sewers go, infrastructure. This aids that development by looking at where the land use pattern is and what the plan for. And the last thing, it gives, really gives a clear, long-range vision to citizens, property owners, investors, public officials, anybody who has any need of using property within the township. And this plan is long-range. It's a 20-year plan, so it's made to go through 2042. Every, at the most, every five years, you should be looking at updating the master plan. If you want to do it sooner, that could be done too, especially in growth areas. The master plan, the adoption is timely. Like we pointed out, a lot of times, 2008 was the last time a plan was adopted. That's 14 years ago. So many things have come into play in the last even few years. We've had increased reliance on work from home, which has changed the dynamics. I'll get some notes in a minute, but the aging of the population, what's that do for employment? We're going to be seeing more in terms of businesses coming in and provide health services, as well as the housing. We're already seeing more developers coming in and asking to do low-rise, two-family, three-family, four-family condominiums as opposed to larger, single-family homes. So we're already seeing somewhat of a shift in the housing patterns. And we're seeing entrepreneurial businesses coming in, the use of online shopping, things like that, and there's so many other things that have come to fruition in the last, even the last half dozen years that we have to be prepared for. This was a basis, the master plan. Did a lot of research in this. As Josh pointed out, we held six or seven virtual meetings on different topics in the fall of 2020. We conducted a survey at that point. Later in the year, in 2021, we conducted a second survey. We also held a very well-attended public open house. We took all these comments, all these ideas, some are very good, and we incorporated many of the critical ones into the master plan in some way, shape, or form. Overall, the master plan really has three major components. All there is a series of chapters in there. It has three major components. One is, we want to look, decide, find out and discover who we are. That goes into looking at existing land use. That's getting opinions from the folks. It's looking at demographics, social, income, population. You look at environmental features, natural things that happen like floodings, and to find out who we are, where things are happening. The second part of a master plan is deciding where we're going. That's the land use vision. That's the future land use plan. That's the goals and policies that you develop. That's, and also incorporating into the zoning plan, and part of the master plan actually dictates what parts of the master plan gets put into which components of the zoning ordinance. And finally, we have an implementation chart in the final chapter. That's going to tell us how we get there. So not only do we see the long-range map, it's like going on a trip. We have the future land use map. It tells us, we want to give from point A to point B to our destination, but sometimes you take little side trips. That's where the goals and policies come in, making decisions. Maybe the best route is not a straight line. Maybe you have to go different ways to get there. I'm going to move into the second slide, township identity. You can move up. I'm going to do the top one, then Josh will take over. Township identity, again, we looked at the income levels. We looked at population levels, demographic levels, population cohorts. We looked at economics of the situation, housing trends and the environment. Some of the key findings we found out was, right now in 2020, the population is listed at 91,663. This has got to make this township one of the largest in the state. It's behind a lot of the major cities. In 2045, the projections are to go up, but it's interesting, if you look at the age cohorts, by 2045, we're looking at really young children, ages zero to four, to actually drop in terms of percentages. We're looking at a drop of 0.4% in terms of that. In terms of ages 65 to 84, those in that age, we're looking at a 55% increase in the age limits of folks there. If you're looking at 85-plus years of age, we're looking at a 365% increase. So that's why this master plan takes into account, it builds in a lot of flexibility and adaptability. It's not so much set in stone, you shall do this and that. We leave a lot of areas for interpretation and adaptability so you can reflect and follow how these trends go. Because just because a trend goes like this, it may plateau, it may drop, and it may go back up again. We did find out that's quite, this township is, you know, it's got a lot of money in it, quite wealthy. We found out that nearly 50% of households earn $100,000 or more. Your poverty level is quite low, but we did find out, based on the average household size in the area, we still have about 5% of the households below the poverty line in here. That could be, part of it could be because the aging of population, fixed incomes, things like that, because sometimes people have still got investments, but it's not showing up in the actual income that they provide. We find out, as I just mentioned, we find out between the same come, between the age breakdowns and things, we're finding out that a housing choice is going to be affected. As we pointed out earlier, millennials may want something different with the aging households. Again, we're finding more and more folks coming. You guys see this all the time in terms of plans coming in, the amount of duplexes and fourplexes, they're low-density. We find out that with MJC on Romeo Plank just north of 21, we're finding that in Fremont, which is at 21 and Card, and so the type of product is changing. We're also seeing, we looked at employment trends, and we just see the employment and healthcare, healthcare services is going to rise the greatest in this township. So you might see an influx of, maybe not doctors or anything, you might see other healthcare providers. We're already seeing a number of people who want to come in, the physical therapists, things like that, occupational therapists. We always get calls on where they can go and things. At that point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Josh. He's going to get in more of the detailed parts of the master plan. And again, you've got questions after, it's great. We're going to try to hit the highlights. It's hard to take 55 pages and do it in 20 minutes or 30 minutes of a presentation, so...
Thanks, Dave. So as he said, I'm going to talk a little bit about the existing land use. You see the map on the screen behind you. That's in our report as well. It really is important to look at the historical context and just how our community is developing. You see like the light purple areas, the industrial zones, for example. 23 Mile Corridor in Macomb Township matches up very well with Shelby Township. They have a lot of industrial in that area as well. Same thing goes with the area along Herb Drive and 21 Mile Fairchild area. There's a lot of industrial on our side, as well as on the Chesterfield Township side. A lot of residential behind commercial along Hall Road, and you see the same thing in Clinton Township. When you start to look at other parts of the township, the existing land use is much more rural, especially the northeast portion of the township, very rural, and that does match what's around it. That doesn't mean it's going to stay that way forever, but much of Ray Township and Lennox Township in that area of Chesterfield is also very rural, and a lot of that has to do with utilities being available. Not a lot of that area actually has water and sewer available, so that kind of dictates what type of development is there now, and it will likely change as we move forward. But the history with relation to the region, I think, has really shown how we've developed, why we have, and how we might develop in the future when you start to look at our neighboring communities. And that also includes some of the environmental features, like the woodlands and wetlands. You know, we do have a lot of rivers and drains running through the township. A lot of wetland areas might prohibit some development in some areas. So environmental features can absolutely shape the way the township develops as well. Looking at the land use vision, so Dave kind of mentioned the three main components of, you know, who we are, what we want it to look like, and then how do we get there? So I think most people in the planning industry would say that the future land use map that comes out of a master plan is really probably the most important page in the document. That was largely the one we discussed tonight on a different item, and for good reason. So the four keys that we were looking at were protect, preserve, promote, and popularize. If you look through the master plan, there's a lot of context on that, why we chose those and what exactly they mean. But essentially, we want to protect our residents that exist and preserve some of that environmental land that exists, you know, the rivers and wetland areas, but promote flexibility. We understand that the northeast portion of the township might be rural now, but it's not going to be that way forever. We need to be flexible with how we develop that, but again, keep that in mind, that we have to protect those who already live there. So looking at those type of things allows us to come up with the future land use map. So the future land use map that you have in your report has a number of categories. We've kind of loosely tried to define them. I'm not going to read through this. That text is in your master plan document as well, but largely those are the categories that we're moving forward with for this future land use map. So here you see the future land use, and really, this goes a long way in promoting and popularizing and all of those contexts that we talked about, but also, as Dave mentioned, we have a lot of goals and policies that are in the master plan that are going to help us get to this. A lot of this probably looks familiar because a lot of the township is already built out. We don't envision too much to be changed in those areas, unless it's an area that is built out, but is larger estate lots. You might have a developer go in there and buy up multiple lots and try to, you know, piece the properties together and put something new there. But for the most part, the vast majority of the development is going to take place along 26 Mile or North Avenue in the northeast portion of the township, as well as in the town center area. This is something that the 2008 master plan and even before that really took a deep dive look at, trying to develop for a number of reasons. It hasn't fully taken off, but I do think we've got a lot of developments in the works. You've seen some of the trees being cut across Broughton Road from here. We've got the library in. We're working with some of the developers that already develop in Town Center for the expansions of their developments, but we've also taken a look at some of the requirements for the Town Center development area and how we can allow development to happen, allow us to maintain that Town Center feel, and make some compromises to make sure we get what we want, but we're not making it over... But we're not making it overly difficult to not be developed at all. So that being said, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of these target plans. I mentioned 26 Mile. We do have a section in the master plan about 26 Mile, how it may develop. These are conceptual ideas of what we think it might turn out to be. And again, there's no sewer up there. Very little of that area has public water at this point. So virtually none of that on that concept plan can be developed as is because there aren't enough utilities up there. But that's something the township as well as the county is looking at specifically with regards to sewer. I think there's a number of municipalities in the area looking at 26 Mile as being a future corridor that can help with the sewer limitations that we have in the area. And might allow for some future development. Additionally, we do have a target plan in there for the Town Center area. So this is kind of an updated version of what you saw in the 2008 report, 2008 master plan. Some of this is based off of actual plans we've gotten from developers. Other pieces of this, you might be able to tell, look slightly different. That's kind of our best guess as how it might develop. Again, this is a concept. We're not saying this is exactly how Town Center is going to develop. But we wanted to look at what was there in 2008 master plan, look at what we know is coming forward as far as development right now. And try to figure out a way to kind of bridge that gap and get this to be a real downtown area. A lot of higher-density residential around some parklands, make it a true Town Center area. Moving on, I'm going to talk a little bit about the implementation plan. So this is kind of the last thing Dave mentioned. It's kind of the final chapter of the plan, how do we get there? So we have a number of things on our list of to-dos essentially to get us to the next plan. Now, again, I mentioned this, a master plan update should be done every five years. This was a complete rewrite of the master plan. That's not the case every five years. A lot of times, if you're happy with what you have, there are quick, you know, five, 10-page updates to the existing master plan. And that may be what we see five years from now. But how do we get there? We have a number of items that we would like to tackle, that being this list. You see a few at the bottom that we're still kind of working out exactly when that would take place. So you don't see some checkboxes in some of those. But overall, this is the master plan. Hopefully, the final, very final draft version, not too many changes. We do have some comments that we've gotten in. This has been on display per statute for the last 15 days here at Town Hall in both the planning counter, the clerk's office, as well as the rec center. It's been on display there. We did advertise this open house tonight in the newspaper. So at this point, we are ready for your comments. We do know, for example, there's a couple typos in here. I think there's a map or two that we're finally finding, getting the final tweaks done for, to insert in there. But this, I would venture to say is 99% complete. And I know the other township staff is very eager to move forward with this. So we'd like to hear what the public might have to say at this time. But at the end of this meeting, I think it's our hope that we could get a recommendation from this planning commission. Pending some of these minor grammar and context revisions, that we can take this to the board for adoption.
Okay. Commissioners, comments, questions?
I just can make a quick comment.
Sure.
Josh and Dave, again, thank you. We've spent over a year and a half on this and a lot of public meetings and a lot of discussion at this board. And there's been a lot of thought, this, I've been through a couple of these, and there's been a lot of thought in this one. And I'm really happy the way it turned out. Yeah, there's probably a few little tweaks before it goes to the board, but I just want to compliment everyone on how hard they worked on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
Mr. Bentley.
Go ahead. Yeah, thank you.
I would, I did all those comments from Mr. Oliver. A lot of work went into it. Read it through this time, and I don't know that I've got the most updated, but it was the one that was sent to us anyway. And I thought it was very well-done. And even though I had questions as I went through it, as I went down, those questions were resolved, a lot of them. My question, I guess at this point, would be, I do have markups. Can I send them to you?
Yes, absolutely, please do.
Okay. And a few questions, but other than that, they were minor.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? We now have a planning department that we can be proud of. So, nice job, Mr. Skurdo and Mr. Box. Okay, anyone else? Once? Oh, yeah, we got to go over to the public.
Oh, the public.
We have public tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open it to the public at 7:26. So I'm going to make the motion. Anybody support it?
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, please come on up. They got nothing? Okay, well, then it, make it 7:27, I guess I need a motion to close the public.
I'll make a motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Meyerly?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Spatafora, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, do we have a motion to recommend the 2022 master plan to the Board of Trustees?
I did have a question, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to verify with Mr. Box, and perhaps I remember this information incorrectly. I probably did. There's only one public hearing required prior to.
Correct.
Does the Board of Trustees have a public hearing prior to adopting it?
No.
They're not required.
Okay.
Put that way.
I guess the only thing I would mention, I'm not sure this is worth holding this up on this evening. Obviously, it's been in the pipeline for a while, we've read it, we know much of what's here. I know I had some people contact me, they saw the agenda went up, they were looking for the plan. I don't believe the plan was online, doesn't have to be, don't think it's required to be. My only concern is we have a public hearing tonight. I know I didn't give the plan out, we've had this discussion, so I didn't send it to anybody. And if we are looking for a public hearing on it, my only concern would be that only showing it at the counter might be minimal. Now, of course, the contrast to this is we know that if we put this out digitally, the number of people who will read it is probably low realistically. So I understand that. My only concern would be, I know I had people asking me about reading it, and I said, you're going to have to talk to the township. I don't have a link online that I can send you. And it's possible that there is perhaps some public comments that we may gather if we had it out there for another two weeks and more accessible. Granted, as Mr. Box said, I'm sure the township is wanting to move forward with this and recognizing that realistically, we may not get many comments. But I'd like to see this able to be put out for another two weeks if it's possible, it would be my preference. If the board doesn't wish to go that way, I recognize that. But I would prefer to have a little bit more time to have it out for public comment. So that'd be my only comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bentley?
I guess in viewing the proposed land use, and I don't know if you can turn it back to that. But I wanted to get some of your feedback or input as to, you know, some of the things that I noticed that were different. And just wanted to get your take on why. And because it's close to me, I would start at North Avenue and 24 Mile Road. There appears to be a commercial there, which is currently residential. And, let me see, yes. And I just wondered what the thought process was for that. And there might be some other areas, although I believe those are in existence. I think that's one of the new ones. Yet nothing shown, even though it's a flex area up at 26 Mile Road and North Avenue. The master plan indicated pretty much the way it was when I used to live above the gas station there many years ago. But it was really reiterating the same type of thing. But yet it is not shown, it maintains the, you know, the flex, which is not defined yet. But fairly well, the intent is identified, but for the flex use. So I wanted to get some input.
Sure. I guess I'll touch on 24 North Avenue first. So one of the comments, we got a lot on the surveys, was that all of the, there was a feeling from a lot of folks that all of the major intersections should have a commercial component. I don't know that that's totally appropriate. For example, Hayden Riken 21 Mile with the school on one corner, I don't know that it's appropriate to have commercial there. But we did feel that 24 and North Avenue could handle commercial. Now, again, it's currently residential. There's nobody saying that they have to rezone it to commercial. This is just giving that option, that if somebody wanted to move forward with a commercial development there. That I will also point out that the southwestern corner of that intersection, which is one of the two parcels that we have identified as potential commercial pieces. We actually had a rezoning request come into us previously, which was then rescinded as they were waiting for conditional rezoning to be approved, which has now been approved and is a process we have. And we have been in touch with that person, and they do still intend to move forward with a conditional rezoning of that to commercial. And in discussions with them and what they're looking to do there, we do feel that that makes a lot of sense. As far as North Avenue and 26 Mile or the 26 Mile Corridor, there's so many unknowns up there because there are not utilities. There's not water, there's not sewer. And we wanted to have some flexibility. That was one of the things I talked about earlier, talking about the master plan, was having flexibility for the future. And not knowing when utilities might come there and how big of utilities, you know. Just because utilities are there doesn't mean they can handle a four-story apartment building, for example. They have to be developed in cahoots with the utilities that are there. So we wanted to provide some flexibility for the landowners and what that might turn into in the future. And we think that's what the flex use accomplishes. Essentially, as we're rewriting the zoning ordinance right now, we'll be putting a flex use in there. But essentially, that's going to point to, our intent at least, is that that points to things like commercial and higher-density residential and light industrial, so long as they're harmonious with their surrounding properties.
Okay. To take a deeper dive into that particular corner, and anything that has commercial office, when or where does it get identified as to whether or not it's a C1? Or, you know, who designates that? Or is that done at the time when somebody requests?
That's done at the time when somebody requests. For example, this evening, we had the property rezoner request, three parcels, two were R1, the third one was C2. They could have come in and just asked for those two R1 parcels to be rezoned to C2. Or they could have asked to rezone them from C2 up to C3. When you look at the master plan, it just says "commercial." That's where you guys have some leverage of, how intense do you think commercial fits on that corner? So going back to 24 North Avenue, if they were to come in and propose a C4, you know, really intense commercial use there, if you didn't feel that was appropriate, you would have the leverage to say, even though the master plan shows "commercial," that's not the type of commercial we feel fits that corner.
Okay. Then my final question was, as it relates to the pathways that have been identified on several of the other plans. One being just south of, I believe it's 26 Mile Road, sort of goes, you know, through all of these sections. It's in, it seems to indicate that there is a utility that goes across there.
That's correct.
Doesn't really say that that's, you know, a utility. And I couldn't find any of the plans that called that out as utility or identified what the, you know, the right-of-ways are, or the easements, I should say. On this land use, future land use, should we not identify those as set-asides? So that if a developer comes in and says, you know, I want to do something with that particular area, but it's not identified on the land use as being, you know, future pathway or utility? It's a utility corridor, and it will also be set aside for pathways or greenways or whatever. Is that something that we need to identify on this kind of a plan so that we don't get into any arguments? Well, hey, no, you can't develop that because we got a pathway going through there.
So if you look at page 46, we do have a non-motorized network map of your, 46 of the draft master plan. We do have a non-motorized network map now, yes. Largely, that utility corridor is actually owned by the utility company. It is, there are a few pieces in there that are not, where the utility is just an easement within the property. The vast majority of that is actually owned by the utility company. So it's not, never easy for someone to come in and disregard the fact that we want to plan there or a trail there. Because first of all, the utility company is probably not going to let them build in their easement anyways. And second of all, the utility company actually owns a lot of that corridor. I want to say it's consumers, but I'm not 100% sure on that. But if you look at the map on page 46.
I've got it.
Parallel with Hayes Road and then parallel kind of between 24 and 25 Mile, that is all one large utility corridor. Again, I think it's consumers that owns that. Now, this is not an easy task to accomplish, to get this to a trail. We would have to work with utility company. It has been done in lots of other municipalities and other utility companies to allow trails through there. But in a lot of places, the utility company has residential units backing up to it. And they currently lease out their utility property to the adjacent landowner where they have essentially a bigger yard there. So some of those lease options with the residential neighbors would have to go away. It would be a big effort to get this. But as far as connectivity, we thought that this would be a great way to potentially in the future connect, you know, a lot of the residents who are in the southeast or southwest portion of the community up to the northeast portion. Including, as you see in section four there, that corridor goes immediately adjacent to Macomb Corners Park, which then we're working on some grants right now to connect that all the way through Town Hall and beyond. So I think it can serve a lot of purposes.
Another, if I could point out, specifically on the part you're talking about, Mr. Bentley, is that part of the trail actually shows up on the county trail plan. So a lot of these trails you see in here, especially the red one going from south to north, that kind of forks off. And that yellow one that you just spoke about, about midway between 25 and 26 Mile, they're on the county regional trail plan. So the county has been working with property owners too to dedicate portions of that.
Okay. Would that be true too of the one from Town Center going to, you know, through section 10, 15, and 14?
That's not on the county.
That's not on the county. When they were looking straight up at that north-south corridor and they had a little bit east-west, because they didn't recognize Macomb Corners Park. And then getting over and hitting over to Chesterfield, they have some trails in Chesterfield.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Spatafora.
I want to just concur with what Mr. Tuckfield said. I mean, a lot of thought in planning has gone on with this by, thank you, township staff and also your firm, Mr. Skurdo at Carlisle-Wartman for putting the effort into it. And in the sense that this is ideally by state law, a five-year review, I don't see. I don't see any harm in, you know, postponing a recommendation to the township board for another two weeks to give an opportunity perhaps for more of our, you know, residents, at least to take a, a look at it for any perhaps, you know, initial comments or final follow-up comments or thoughts, opinions and, and things like that with the importance of a document like this, which serves as a guide for planning. So I, I will concur with Mr. Tuckfield. I think that's where he wanted to go with it. I, I have no issue or objection in this particular instance, maybe delaying a, a recommendation to the township board for another two weeks.
I just wanna follow up on that. And I appreciate both ideas here. We gotta, we gotta step back and, and look. We, we've been working at this a year and a half. We've had Zoom meetings, we've had public meetings. We've brought people into the park, Senator, Park Building, and we had an event there one night. I mean, you know, I, I think we've been forthcoming with everything and trying, trying to actually get public participation. And generally, through the Zoom meetings, what I experienced, it was very light. It was, did, would you feel the same way, Mr. Abak, on the Zoom meetings?
It was light, I don't know, very light. Some of them were, were more attended than others, but yes.
I expected more residents, actual, you know, John Q public. Cause when you, when you go down the list of people, it, it was a lot of us. So I was hoping we could get a lot of.
I, I would say that if we went back and looked at the Zoom records for those Zoom meetings, there were somewhere between 10 and 20 people attending each of those meetings. But you're right, at least half of them were township staff or the planning commission or somebody from the newspaper or the same residents attending every single meeting. So it's not like we got 10 to 20 new residents each time.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we could, we could keep extending and extending it, but we, we gotta remember that, you know, there's developments that are coming on and, and some of these maybe developers have seen this and like some of these small changes we've made. And that would get this, that would also help them, help residents. I, I think personally me, I'm ready to go with this.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I just wanna go over just a few things. We've post, this has been out for 15 days at your department and in the clerk's office, correct?
And, and the rec center, yep.
And this has been on the news, we've, we've, not the news, the newspaper, we've advertised it that way, correct?
Correct.
What would we do differently if we postponed it two weeks? Would we have to do that all over again?
I, I don't believe we would have to advertise in the newspaper again. We could leave it out at, at our counter and the clerks and Parks and Rec for two more weeks.
So there would really be no big difference if we extended additional two weeks? We're not gonna repost anything in the newspaper, correct?
Correct.
If you didn't say that it's being extended, why would anybody look at it any further?
Your motion tonight would be the public record that, if, if you were to table this essentially, that, that serves as the public record. The public was notified that tonight was the meeting. If they look at the meeting minutes from tonight, or if they look at the, the video from tonight, you tabling it is the public record.
And that, and really that would be my concern. I would have to agree with Mr. Oliver on this. I mean, if we're not gonna, if it's gonna be the same, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate, and I talked to Aaron a little bit this morning when I saw him at Kroger's.
Small town.
He got a lot of punch keys in his hand.
They all got eaten. Where are they? Eaten?
I mean, and, you know, we have, we have two members here. I don't, I would have to agree with Mr. Oliver on that. I, I appreciate what you guys are saying a hundred percent. I just don't know what difference it would make by us just tabling it now if we're not gonna do anything differently. That's just my opinion.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, the, the biggest thing that I would see is different. Smith is, is posting it somewhere online on the township website. Obviously, it is at the, at the, at the counter. It's at the rec center. And I don't know how many people would read it. As Mr. Oliver said, we've had some other instances where it was light. However, particularly within a cycle, you know, we've, I don't wanna be the person that overuses COVID because it kind of has been an excuse in some cases, but this has been a fractured process. We have had to do things online, and this is kind of the last step, which I personally feel at least should be given the opportunity to be online. You know, this evening, we made a relatively weighty decision to, to recommend denial. It was based on the master plan. There's other times when we talk to residents, and as Mr. Box mentioned earlier, we tell them, you know, it's your responsibility to understand and know this. And I, I think to me, part of that is, is making sure that at all those steps, we give those opportunities. Mr. Oliver, I, I totally agree with you. There has been citizen input. I think the plan looks good. Mr. Box and, and Mr. Skirdo, I think have done a good job. They've kept us informed, they've kept the public informed. To me, I just, I wanna make sure that we, we allow for all those opportunities. So as we go through the next five years, when we have some citizens in here and, and they may or may not be happy, that I can look at them and say, we have given every opportunity. And to me, well, there's, there's two things in this case, and I don't know. Bring this up not to, to point blame, but just to kind of explain. So as an example, we did mention at the last meeting, Mr. Box mentioned that we were gonna have it at this meeting, but the agenda for this evening, for example, I don't believe was online until, until this morning, or pardon me, Monday morning. So a typical path for most people to understand that the meeting was happening and what would be on it would be posting an agenda or someone reading an agenda. So if you had not watched last meeting, the first time you might understand that this was gonna be viewed tonight would have been yesterday morning. Yes, it was properly advertised, and that is legally the right. But we also do know realistically, most people don't see about the meetings from the advertisement. Realistically, they see it from an agenda that's being posted somewhere. So you have something that, that was potentially there yesterday. And then you have, in a time when we're restricting, when, when people generally are restricting travel, we have the plan at, at three fixed points. So to me, the difference would be having it out there for two weeks, having it online, being able to give people the, a chance to make comments. Again, realistically, how many people are going to make comments? I don't know, but I think it's the process of giving people the best opportunity. So just, I, I appreciate your and Mr. Oliver's point on it, and that's just clarifying the difference to me in the reasoning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Box, this year and a half process that you went through, did you have to do everything that you did? Was that required? For you to have all those meetings, to be over in Parks and Rec, to have the Zoom, to have the surveys? Could you have limited that to maybe two or three things?
What was required was a public hearing, which is what's tonight. All of the, the Zoom meetings, the surveys, the public open house, that was above and beyond what's required by statute. And I'll also add too, you, you know, if, if you would like, I can work with our broadcast media department and try to get this posted on the township website first thing tomorrow. If it is recommended to, to move forward to the board, it would likely end up on next Wednesday's board agenda, which would give people a week to look at it. So it's kind of a compromise, instead of postponing it for two weeks, they'd get a week. I, I can do that. And, and we'll leave them on the counters, obviously here. As well as, I'll point out too, that when, we've talked about this before with, with your packets versus the board's packet, the board packet will go out on Friday and this will be a part of it, if it's on next week's agenda as well. So it will get distributed that way as well.
And at the Board of Trustees meeting, if people had questions, they could ask them, correct?
It's not required, it's not required for a public hearing at the board meeting. But they do allow comments on agenda items at the board meeting.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Spatafor.
Kathy, Ms. Smith brings out a good point that I didn't think of as far as if there were any additional costs as far as republishing and, and anything like that, which arguably would be a burden to taxpayers. There doesn't seem to be any. I was thinking of like Aaron was, the online component, just to do it. Fully agree and appreciate both your comments, Charlie, yours Kathy, and all the other comments. I would not be in favor of going beyond another two weeks. I think this is long enough, but for the online component with the, you know, the fracturing of a lot of things with COVID, you can argue a lot of public hearings have already kind of taken place. But, you know, people, they tend to look at things digitally too. And if, just to make a 99.5%, going out of our way to a, a 100%, I don't see an issue of, in this case, you know, at least postponing it for two weeks. I wouldn't have a major problem if the board voted, or if the planning commission recommended approval tonight. I just think it would be, you know, complete for another two weeks. I don't see a harm personally in, in doing that.
Hey Dan, what you're saying is if we postponed it, then we voted on it at the next meeting?
Yes, I wouldn't wanna go beyond the next meeting, but I'd like the component just to give people, you know, at least an online chance to do it. I know our, our friends in the back room have a wonderful website in which things are posted there as well. Ms. Western, I know does, but, you know, and other things. And if it gives Mr. Box a chance to get with our broadcast media people, you know, to get it online. I, I, I guess like Aaron was saying, you can confidently look at people and if they say, well, we didn't know, we didn't have a chance, and we'll say, no, 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 I don't wanna go there. We gave you the opportunity and we did above and beyond. And even at the end, after all of COVID and all this, when we were back with live meetings, here we are, we gave you a chance. So, I mean, we've done our role as public servants and, and representatives. And I just think with the importance of a document like this every five years, I don't see a, a, a harm in just waiting another two weeks from March 1st to March 15th. Is that the next planning commission meeting?
Correct.
In this instance.
I think I would agree with you if they hadn't gone above and beyond with all that they've done to open it to the public. So if there's no one else?
I think, I think Mr. Box maybe comes up with a, a compromise of some of the concerns by getting it on the, online right away. If, that would bring, that would bring it out a week if our meetings.
Are compromised?
Is eight days away from tonight. You get it out tomorrow, it'd be seven days away. And you'd have a weekend at some eat, if they had some concerns and it does get open to the public. And I'm sure the supervisor, you know, he lets people talk. So they'd be heard if they had some solid concerns. I, to me, that good compromise for both problems here.
As the liaison for the Board of Trustees, would you pass that along to them and ask them if they could do that?
I would pass that on to Mr. Viviano.
Okay.
You know, ask him if somebody specifically needs to talk about that. Would he listen or would he bring him up? And I'm, I don't wanna speak for him, but I'll, I'll pass it on to him.
Yeah, make the recommendation.
I just have a question. Mr. Abak, you said this has been on your counter?
Yes.
People can come in? How many people have come in and looked at it?
In the past couple of weeks, five or six maybe, most of which were not here specifically to look at this. They were here for other reasons, but did give it a look.
So it's sitting on the counter and they just?
Correct.
And three look, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Nope, go ahead.
So I just wanna make sure, planning, the clerk's office, the rec center.
Correct.
And do we have to make a motion to ask that they do put it on our website, on our?
Media, media.
No, he's back there telling me no.
I don't think a motion is required for that.
I think that, you know, I wish we would have thought of doing that sooner. That would have been, but I think that is a compromise and I think that's a great idea from you guys.
So we can make a motion both ways. You put it on the website starting tomorrow and you give them, you give the public, you know, our friends and family a chance to speak at the Board of Trustees meeting, or we could postpone it for two weeks.
Correct.
And it would basically be kind of the same thing. You would take their comments, whether it's between now and the 15th, when we meet again, or their comments at the Board of Trustees meeting and, you know, copy them down and look at the plan and see if any of those are viable, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, you did say, gentlemen, that all we needed to do was have a public hearing.
Correct.
All this with the cultivate McComb and the open houses and all the meetings that we had, we just went up and.
So, Mr. Chair, this would be a difference of maybe a seven-day review period to the Board of Trustees meeting versus if it were delayed, a recommendation 21 more days or 21, 22, until not the next board meeting, but the board meeting afterward?
Correct.
Is that what we're looking at?
Correct. It would be on either next Wednesday, which I believe is the ninth board meeting, or on the 23rd? Is that correct? 23rd.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just make one final brief comment, and that would be that one of the differences between the public comments that we've gathered so far is that the comments we've gathered so far are what people are thinking. Whereas comments at this point are reviewing a document. So up to this point, at the, at the meeting we had at the Parks and Rec, we were able to show some of the things for the first time. But while we have done all of those public hearings and we've gone above and beyond, and again, I feel like I'm being negative, I don't mean to be, I'm, I'm happy with what we've got here. But they were about gathering comments from a vacuum, if you will. Whereas the purpose of this is to gather comments about what was written after doing that. So I don't wish to dismiss public comments, but they are different and for different purposes. And to me, like you say, Mr. Hardy, they have gone above and beyond, and I don't want to dismiss that. But it is, it was for two different goals. One was to gather comments out of vacuum, what do you like? And the purpose of this is to then say, okay, here's what was written after taking that into account. Do you have any comments on this? So I hear what everybody's saying, I, I do appreciate Mr. Box putting a compromise out there. I would, I would still prefer to table it in two weeks, although I would not vote against this if we, if we chose to keep it. But I do feel there is a difference between the, between the public comments we've had to this point and the public hearing.
Okay, any other discussion? Anyone else? All right, well, then I would like to make the recommendation to, to the Board of Trustees to approve the 2022 master plan. Does anybody wanna second that?
Can, just a couple of questions. There's a few typos and stuff that.
Yeah, what we fix.
We need that to be addressed in the motion? And then you're gonna put it on, on the website right away?
Correct.
Immediately.
So I'd like, I'd like to recommend to the Board of Trustees the approval of the 2022 master plan with it going on the website tomorrow and, or shortly. And all clerical mistakes are corrected.
Right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Michael Hardy, seconded by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor?
Even with my comments, I'll still vote yes.
And Mr. Bentley, yes.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to old business, annual review of the Planning Commission bylaws with corrections and modifications. Mr. Box?
Well, we went over these the last couple of meetings. I think there were a few more minor tweaks that you should have got the red line version of in your packet. To be honest, I, I was on vacation at the end of last week, so I have not even looked too closely at these. I'm trusting that Mr. Aloya and, and his firm have made the recommended changes.
Okay, comments from the, the board or the planning commissioners? Looking at you when they said the board, yeah.
Like all the corrections have been lined and reprinted and. Seems like they're right on what we've, we've been working with and requesting them to do.
Mr. Bentley?
I had a couple. And, and maybe one of them is a question, but under, under Article Six, meetings? It's just a, a, just a minor typo thing, under five. it's just a, a, just a minor typo thing, um, under five, it would be F5, uh, public hearings. Um, and uh, B, under five. And uh, in red, it was motion from the commission to closes the public hearing, just to close. Minor, like I say, but then under agenda L, um, I thought there was a request to um, to have new business after old business. I might be wrong.
That was my suggestion last time and, and you're right. I, I think everybody was in support of that, but that was my suggestion.
Yeah, I thought it was a great suggestion, wonderful. And that's, that's all I had, that's all I saw that were, you know.
Okay. So do we make that change, commissioners? Yes, no?
I, I make a motion that with the uh.
You can make a motion?
Items, minor items that were identified. Um, if it's uh, in agreement with everyone else, that we um, approve the bylaws as amended.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bentley? Support. Supported by Mr. Tuckfield. I think we should call the roll on this one. We've been working on this a long time, so go ahead.
Mr. Tuckfield, supported?
Yes.
Tuckfield's supported.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bentley, yes? Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Um, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Why do that? Uh, Spataf- Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Alright, next item is public comments on non-agenda items. Now is your chance, you got one last chance to speak, folks. No, nothing, you got nothing? Okay, then we'll move on to commissioner comments. Mr. Spatafora?
I guess this is to uh, to you, Josh. Whatever happened to Matic Chevrolet agenda? It was adjourned about 1,400 times and uh, you know, then hasn't been brought back. Are they ready to proceed, you know, or?
Um, it was being tabled time and time again, uh, as we were waiting on some items from them. Then it looked like they were finally ready to go, but their purchase agreement had expired on the property. So we asked them to provide evidence that uh, they had an updated purchase agreement and have not heard back from themselves.
Matic Chevrolet?
This was over in the southeast corner.
Matic Toyota.
I'm sorry, Matic Toyota.
Matic Toyota.
They were gonna come in with a planned unit development um, of uh, where a lot of thought and time was put into it. And uh, I know it was postponed on a number of occasions at the request of a petitioner. And I know they were working with uh, our township attorneys, uh, with their legal counsel. And uh, I just wondered what happened to it. It just kinda disappeared and I hadn't seen it and wondered what, if it was ever gonna come back and with any finality to be put to it, but I guess not, at least not at the time being.
It rode off in the sunset.
Drove off.
It was really a nice project. It was, you know, they could've got it off the ground, it was a restaurant. Would've been nice, so.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Just a brief comment on the master plan process. I know Charlie touched on it, but just wanna thank, thank Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdo. I know it's been a long process, as they mentioned, it's been quite a while since it was written. So a lot of effort that has to go into it. And uh, as much as sometimes it's easier to write something from scratch, having written things from scratch, you inevitably get into it and realize how many things you have to add that you weren't planning on adding in the first place. So um, I know Josh came in, it was high on the list of priorities given to him. So he had to learn the township and write the master plan sort of simultaneously. So um, appreciate all the work you guys put into it. I'm, I'm glad we have it. A good thing that we're gonna try to review it every five years and hopefully we can uh, keep it a living document that reflects things as opposed to maybe the somewhat stale version we had when you guys came in. Thanks for all you guys' work, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
And hopefully when we come back here to approve it again in five years, you won't have to have spent, you know, 18 months working on it.
So we're limiting it to 10 pages.
Okay, anybody else, any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would like to concur with what, what Mr. Tuckfield just said. I mean, I know I'm new on this board, but I know what a process it is. And I really appreciate everything you guys did and everything you guys did before we were here. What a process and thank you all very much for that. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
So, good. Anyone else? Alright, let's move on to the McComb Township Board of Trustees liaison, Mr. Charles S. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
No, I won't use your middle name, I promise.
Couple of things, uh, we did some promotion. We promoted uh, someone from Park in-house. They were promoted up in the parking rack, in the water department also, in-house was promoted. And um, it's nice to see that, that our employees from in-house are taking initiative to, to move up. And, and it's goo- that's always good. That's, that was one thing, um, the township has decided, the board trustees have decided to uh, sell Foss Road. The, the park that we were gonna build on Foss Road, uh, we're gonna, we've abandoned the idea and um, uh, it's going up for sale. Okay. So that's just something. Uh, the other thing, we're going, we approved uh, Wardman Kyle, Kyle Orment for our um, to redo our ordinance. So they're starting on it and uh, I'm sure they're working hard on it already. And that's another project that has been just stacked and stacked and stacked on, so. So that'll be a task, but uh, I think it's a great company to do it. Uh, the last thing um, that comes near and dear to my heart is uh, years ago, we had a tragic accident in a meter pit here in the township.
I remember.
And uh, some of the, the reason why the law, the reason why the law, it was in the ground and, and employees couldn't get out. So it's gonna be our first meter pit above ground. So the valves, everything will be above ground. Nobody will be ever in a pit on, on the new one. And we're still gonna have a few pits, but as we, as time goes on and we get the money to replace them, we'll, we'll replace them with that style of a building. It'll have big doors in it, so if an accident happens, uh, there'll be escape routes. So nobody will be trapped in it. And that's it.
Alright.
Chair, how many?
No questions, remember? I don't let it. Go ahead, go ahead.
How, how many acres is that Foss Road park?
Twenty s- four, it's, it's, I don't know, I don't know for sure.
Was it Foss Road up? North of 24 or south 25?
No, it, it's south, it's south of 24 on the east side, it's the corner.
It's north of 24.
North's corner, yeah.
Okay, north's corner, okay.
Yeah, yeah, right across from landfill. Well, Josh, how many acres is that, 20?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I, I wanna say it's around 30 or 32 acres.
Is it that much, okay?
But I, I do know um, in the northeast portion of the, the property, there's a significant amount of wetlands. There's not that much.
Usable.
It's not 32 acres of developable land, it's probably closer to 25 or so.
So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, hold on, I think we have another question.
Mr. Bentley?
No, no.
No.
Okay, you can ask one quick one.
Mr. Chairman, I did, I did have one verification from Mr. Oliver. So are we planning on like reusing the name? We're gonna name another park Eli Whitney Park somewhere down the road?
Uh, the land's for sale right now. Might be Y Whitney subdivision.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
For sale.
Alright.
That's it.
Moving on to ZBA liaison update, Mr. Tuck.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't think we have anything reported since the last meeting and our Thursday meeting is canceled, so uh, I've got nothing else this evening.
You have nothing?
Nothing else.
Alright.
Wow.
Planning Department items, Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdo. I keep, you know, I always go Mr. Box and they never include you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Oliver touched on it, we are in the process of rewriting the zoning ordinance uh, as, as we had previously discussed here. So I, I say we're rewriting it from scratch, which is true, but only half true. I mean, there's a lot of pieces that will be preserved. We can't do away with requirements that uh, would create a lot of non-conforming uses and things like that. So um, we are essentially starting over from scratch, but that's not totally accurate. But we are starting that process, the board did approve that at the last meeting. Uh, and I know Mr. Carlisle has already actually been working on it for a while, uh, as have we in-house. The other thing, I would just wanna thank everyone for the kind words about the master plan. It's been a long process. Happy to uh, get that off my plate. Hopefully we can accomplish a lot more and focus on other things right now um, as we move forward. And I would also like to thank Dave and, and Carlisle Orman for all of their effort and all of the work that they put in on this. And something that I know will make the township and the residents happy is that they came in significantly below their uh, their cost estimate, so very pleased with that.
Awesome.
Well, probably won't get you a raise, but it is from the heart, so. Alright, um, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
I'll support.
Subvented by Mr. Meyerly, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.